Doug?
Doug, report to the office, please.
We'll call this meeting to order. It's the regular meeting of the Harrison County Board of Education, was slightly late due to a special meeting preceding this, and we will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mr. Navarro.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Brings us down to our special presentations. Special recognition of the presentations, two of our favorite things on here tonight, on the same night. So first up, Dr. Kelly Nelson with Medbrook Children's Charity.
You know, as I was driving over here this evening, I was thinking, the last two years have been tough. My job's been tough chronically. You feel a little bit sorry for yourself, but then I stopped and think about you folks, and I think about any teachers here and any parents here, and I think my job's really still a walk in the park, which you guys have done with students, and this you're keeping in the classroom, hands off to you, it's a great job. So congratulations to you.
Thank you.
Twenty-two years ago, a guy a little bit lighter than me, a guy with a lot darker hair than me showed up with a check and made a vow that we'd be back. So twenty-two years later, we're still back. I'm still the voice of, I'm still the face of the charity. The heart of this charity is this community. This community came through in untold measure this year, and we're here to bring in more money.
Wow.
Our two favorite things we fund, and we've funded since day one, is the Children's Apparel Program. I have $35,000 for them tonight. There's angels among us, the School Nurses' Discretionary Fund, we have $15,000 for them. So I've got checks for $50,000 tonight. That takes our giving back to the community to just over $2 million, and our giving to the school board right at $1 million in those 22 years. And that's a testament to this community taking care of this community. You're not a children, you're not a nurse.
I'm a patient. Hey, I'm a patient.
You guys want to stay together?
Thank you.
We'll be back.
All right.
Thank you.
Hey, we can't say enough about Medbrook Children's Charity, and I will tell you, just from being in the school system for as long as I have, it's touched, I know my students and the kids in Harrison County in every possible way. So thank you.
That's what brings us back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great day at the office.
God bless you. Thank you.
Next up, the other great project, Grandfamilies Program.
Hi there, everybody. How is everybody?
Good.
I took the mask off. I remember being here the last time, and I felt like I was suffocating when I was trying to talk to you all. I thought, they're gonna think I'm just too old to be able to do this job anymore. So I'm here to tell you, I am not too old to do this job anymore. I would like to first recognize a few of our committee members are here. Mrs. Mancini is on our committee. Lola Brown is on our Healthy Grandfamilies Committee. Myself, of course, Julie Solomon, who is our social worker, and her, Executive Director of Family Services of Harrison Marion County, Carolyn Jones, back there's also on our committee. And we had several more, but I don't think I'm missing anybody tonight. Okay, Angela prepared for you all a rather detailed report of what we've been, what we've done, where we've been, where we are, and where we're going to. And I'm not going to bother to read it to you. I do want to share just a little bit of information with you. With, you know, part of the project, there's two or three facets to it, and one of the facets is the sessions that we do with green families. There are eight sessions that they can attend. We've done those down at Schindt, at one of the churches, and we've done them at Simpson Creek Baptist Church in Bridgeport. And on the third page, yes, of your report, the different rounds that we've had, we've had a total of 68 participants at those sessions, and they learn things like nutrition, navigating the legal system, navigating the school system, parenting, parenting in the 21st century. It's different when they raise their children. And some of these grandparents are actually great-grandparents raising their children. But those participants, that encompassed 82 grandchildren that were affected. But it's not just about the sessions that we do. We get referrals, and they're given to Julie, and then she makes contacts. She visits them, she talks with them, she helps them understand where they are and what's going on in their lives, and then they share with her, and then it, what sifts out our needs that they have. And she has been in contact with over 175 total grandparents in Harrison County, which encompasses over 500 of the children in our schools, preschools and elementary, middle and high schools. The program has parents involved from every school now in Harrison County, which that's, that was our goal. And, you know, we look at those numbers, and I, Deb Cecil was working on some stuff for me today, and of course, she couldn't get through all that stuff. I just happened to call her like about 11 o'clock, and, but she did get me a good bit of information, which I'm still going to sift through. We're trying to figure out, in Harrison County, just exactly how many grandparents we have that are raising their grandchildren. And it's an elusive number. Sometimes just out of pride, they just do it. And they're, you know, and they're gonna, you know, pull up their, pull themselves up by their bootstraps or whatever, however that saying is, and, and just do it. But, you know, I looked at a 2019 census in Harrison County, at that time, that was the most recent one I could find, and it, I think it was close to 70,000. So let's just say conservatively, we have 65,000 people in Harrison County. Does that make sense? Okay. So conservatively, then, to say that of those 65,000, 10% are grandparents. I think that's a conservative number, okay? Now, this information came out from the National, I'm not sure if I'm able to read this, National Center for the Analysis of Healthcare Data, okay? And this was from 20, January 2020, not quite a, not quite a year old. And it says on here that there are 50.7% of grandparents that are responsible for their grandchildren 18 years younger. 50% of the grandparents living in Harrison County. Now, if we go by this conservative number that I told you I kind of figured, I'm not making these up, but I was being really conservative. So 50% of that 6,500 would be 3,250 grandparents. And it, someone must prove me wrong on that, go right ahead. But, you know, if we've only reached 175 of them, Julie, I think we have some more work to do.
Yeah.
I think we have some more work to do. So that's just a little bit of the data. Now, page four, you know, this still rings pretty true. It shows you the ages of the grandparents, anywhere from 37 to 72 years of age. Some of them are great-grandparents, and I think we've had them older than 72, maybe not. So this data needs to be brought up to date also. But look, there on four, their household incomes. And this is where we run into problems. All of a sudden, they're on this fixed income, and they have anywhere from one to seven children dropped off on their doorstep. It's seven, the most that we have in any one household. That's a lot of amounts to feed and people to clothe. And then the rest of the data talks about the reasons that they're being dropped off, and most of them have to do with the opioid crisis. And it goes on and gives you some information in here, what our participants had to say, page after page of volunteers when we do the live classes. We've had to do them virtually the last couple times because of COVID, and we did not have as many participants, but we still had participants. And she was still serving them via home visits and over the telephone and taking care of all kinds of needs. Social, emotional, physical needs of the grandparents themselves, financial needs, you know, just you name it. Life, life needs, helping them with their life needs. Any questions?
Like, I know we have a program called, like, Handle With Care, where the police, anytime a child dealt with, or the parents dealt with, a police matter, they tell the schools, you know. If, if there was a way to let the teachers know that, hey, this child is being raised by the grandparents. So if there's, for instance, if they don't know how to operate a tablet, right? Maybe the teacher could do something, instead of sending on the tablet homework, where the grandparents may not know how to do that, the paper homework. Is there any way, are we connecting with the teachers?
Yes.
To help with that?
Especially when we were doing Schoolology assignments, when we were remote for, oh, yes, yes. And we were helping grandparents to understand assignments and hooking them up with the teachers if they, there were a couple instances where it was just, the communication did not get through for several reasons. We helped them get internet connections in their homes. We helped before, the first year, the children did not take iPads home, if you remember. And so there were homes that were without laptops and internet connections and printers and paper and ink. So because of funds that were donated, and I've got pages, occasional page in there of different donations that we've received over the years, that monies was used to, to do that. And yes, Riley, and I remember talking about it, I don't remember if you talked about it, but actually, yes, I do. I do remember you going in and showing parents how to hook up the computer and how to get onto it and how to Google, or how to get on Schoolology, yeah. And set up a printer. I think you did that just recently, didn't you? Yeah. Whatever need they call with, you know, we look for the resources. We've caught, we're caught with the pet, the pet problems, and, and make the connections with teachers and/or, you know, school people and...
How do we reach the other grandparents, too? Like, like you said, so...
How do we do that? And, you know, most of our, we get referrals from a lot of different places, but usually it's from the school or the school counselor, because they, they know the parents. And then when you look at confidentiality involved, I mean, if a, if a grandparent calls her and she gains their trust, then, you know, she has to be very careful, because, you know, not so much, but every once in a while, you find someone who just does not trust the school because of their own past bad experiences, you know, with school people. Either themselves as a student, research has shown that, or their experiences as a parent trying to help their own child in school. So we try to build some bridges and do what we can by focusing on the child. This, this will help Johnny if we, you know, contact the school and try to get this information, dah 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 dah. But what, what have we done? Oh, my gosh. Last year, the billboard company, Lamar, they let us have billboards spaced on three of their billboards throughout Harrison County, and it was Harrison County Healthy Grandfamilies, call this number. We do newspaper, television, we've done radio shows, Facebook. I tell you, one thing that we got the best result was when it went out over the call system. What's that called, Todd? Where we sent a message out over the call system?
The notification system.
Yeah, the notification system. And, you know, such and such is going to be happening, call this number. And we got a lot of numbers from that. We sent letters, Mary Ann Morton got on Weavis and gave us a list of well over 400 names and addresses. She gave them to me, because I'm a board employee, and I'm, you know, I abide by confidentiality. Addressed off, well, she gave me the stickers to put on the envelopes, and we mailed a letter with information about the Healthy Green Families Project in there. And we got a feel like that. We just, we try to do everything that we can to advertise and to reach out. But, and a lot of times, it's word of mouth. You know, Micah, I've been with our Parent Educated Resource Center since 1984, and I remember, it's probably been about six or seven, well, maybe more than that, maybe 10, 12 years ago, we were doing a transition session, and we invited all the high school parents that had students that were juniors and seniors in high school. And we had that event out at the big library area at the Old Gore School. And we were up there, and we had different people come in and talk, like Department of Rehabilitation Services. We had a couple of colleges talk about how they helped students with special needs and Job Squad, and just, you know, all the different service and organizations that were serving students after high school. We called it basically, what's going to happen after you graduate, something to that effect. And I think we had maybe just five or six parents come out of all of our high schools that we sent those, those invitations out to. But one lady sat there, and we talked about, you know, the Parent Educated Resource Center, and then we got into talking about all these services, and they all presented, and then people walked around. And one mother, her son was a senior, you know, soon going to graduate, and she walked up to me and she goes, where have you people been all my life? And we had been in, we'd been functioning for at least 15, 20 years at that time. I don't know what to tell her, except, you know, and, and the same thing with the Parent Resource Center. We put the information out there, newspaper, radio, television, send home things in backpacks, and, you know, present. We just presented two days in a row out at Lumberport Elementary School to the grandparents out there. Had a wonderful response out there. But we just don't stop trying.
We need a Prop Page Sunday paper. Prop Page with you on it.
Are you from the newspaper? Prop Page with Julie's picture, with Julie's picture on it. All right, so call Julie. Okay, with that being said, any other questions?
We need five of you, 10 of you.
You're cracking me up, because I need five or 10 of me. You're cracking me up. Okay, Julie, what have I forgotten? You've got to meet Julie. Come on up here, Julie. She, she's the one that talks. She spends a lot of time. You worked with grandparents today in a home visit, right?
Yep, yep.
She does.
Yeah, I really can't top this. I feel embarrassed. She's got so many stories. I've been in this position a year. It's been wonderful. I don't think it happens without her, honestly. That's been my experience, so you can't lose her ever. She can't ever retire. But no, this has been one of the most fulfilling jobs I've ever had in my life. So thank you for that opportunity. Thanks for working with her. This is just a really rewarding, fun experience, working with grandparents. I just became one myself, so I know the love that you have for these kids. And just like Pam said, we thank them in every conversation we have with them, to let them know that what they're doing is fantastic, and we see them. So that's part, one of our biggest jobs, is to let them know that we appreciate them.
What can we do with the board to help?
You know, you've all been so supportive, and to ask me that question, just keep up the support and, and the encouragement that you do do, and, and, you know, just, I don't know. I, I don't know. This is a, this is a great little retirement party that I'm at, and it's still feeling nice. We're, we finished three years. We're going into our fourth year. And, you know, first, I didn't take the job at first. I told them, no, I wasn't putting anything else on my plate. And Donna Jo Young was here first, and she had a myriad of, she broke her ankle, one ankle, and had a heart attack, and came back from that, and then broke both ankles. And she's, I just can't do this anymore. And I said, oh, my gosh. And so it made me fall in love with it. I think it was a ploy. I'm going, I went and see x-rays. Did she really break something, you know? But I, just, just be supportive and, and send grandparents our way when you hear them. We've had, you know, we've had board employees call us. One of our maintenance men, I'm not sure he's still in this building, but he's up there emptying my garbage can one time, and he goes, you know, I've been hearing about what you do up here. You need to work with my neighbors, you know? Just, just, just keep sending work our way. Keep sending people for us to help. I don't know, any other questions? No, I don't need a new Mercedes, or my Equinox is just fine.
Hey, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. The next thing that we need to do is to recognize some people. And so first, if Craig Baker would come up here. Now, he's with Thrasher, and you know what, he was, he was going to bring a check to give us. And so you know what, this, this is pretending an invoice.
Yeah, yeah, this is the pretending.
So we're going to, we're going to let him, yes.
Yes. Oh, well, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Can we have him pretend that he's going to give us this, so that Thrasher can get that done? Do you want to tell him about this check?
Yeah, so, you know, we, we work all through the Mid-Atlantic region, and unfortunately, grandparents and great-grandparents raising grandchildren has become a major issue, right? Or a challenge, let's say. And that's why, when we have an opportunity to support a program like the Grandfamilies Program, we love to do it, because they're an invaluable asset to the community where we're headquartered, and we appreciate all that you do, and we're happy to support in any way. So that's all I can say.
Good support. Doris, if you don't mind coming down, and Julie, maybe Lola and Julie, and you'll let Craig give this check to...
There is a check that's been mailed. Check's in the mail.
We had to do this tonight, and then he walked in and said, well, we need the check. And I thought, well, here's a mandate.
Should have brought one of those big cardboard...
They don't have your name.
How are we supposed to look at this?
Okay, so wait, no, go away, Julie. We've got at least one more person. You know, if you, some of you can remember, usually I have like 80 certificates to give out, right? If you remember that year. But we were virtual, so we didn't have the restaurants involved. We didn't have the, the people to help with food there those eight nights. We didn't have our students that help, our teachers and other community volunteers. So next time I come back, I'm going to have probably 80 again. But we have with us also Brittany Phillips.
Thank you.
She's with the...
Yeah, I'm with the, that's okay. I'm with the GFWC Bridgeport Junior Women's Club. And every two years, we get a new special project that comes down from the GFWC West Virginia State, which, they're also in other states as well. And it was the opioid, oh, excuse me, opioid crisis. And one of the ladies in the club, Laura Hardso, which I'm sure a few of you know, brought it to our attention about Healthy Grandfamilies. I'd never even heard of it. A lot of women in our club had never heard of it. And we, as a club, I think in February, is that when we presented the check?
Yes.
Yes, we presented the check here in February. And then we have our, we're back on it with our gala that's coming up in 2022 of March, and we'll be supporting the Healthy Grandfamilies with that. So we keep a small portion for our club, which also goes out into the communities. We're, you know, Backpack Program, helping things like that. And then the rest of it will go to Healthy Grandfamilies. So we're really happy that we can help. And I was telling Pam, I do our Facebook page, and when we, we got a ton of messages from grandparents on our, through our Messenger after we presented the check. So, yeah, we're so happy to help.
And is anybody here from Books-A-Million? Okay, I'll get back to them. But this is the, this is the second time that Books-A-Million has made us their project. So that's over $4,000 worth of books that they have donated to the project. And when we went to Lumberport Elementary School, thank you, we took books with us, and we did a book activity, and we let each grandparent that was there pick a book that they would like to read to their grandchild. And then we let each grandchild pick a book that they wanted to read to their grandparent. And we had a little bit of time left over, so I said, is there any grandparent here that would like to go ahead and maybe read the book that you picked to the group here today? We had, we had volunteered, didn't we? And the kids, they all wanted to read their book. But, but both days that we were there, we had a grandparent volunteer. So it's, it's really good stuff that goes on. Okay, Julie, I'm going to let you take it, so you can recognize our, you can talk about our two virtual groups, how many we had, and then introduce any grandparents that we might have here tonight, okay?
So I was involved with just one virtual group, one that had been completed right before I started my tenure at Healthy Grandfamilies. We had four in that session, and then on mine, we had two graduates. So not bad for a virtual session. It's, honestly, part of the appeal of these sessions are getting together with other grandparents in the exact same position. So the, the educational component is, is just fascinating and helpful, but the unity that it comes from these settings is probably the most, the best part of it. So virtually, virtual doesn't allow that so much, but it does allow the educational component. And we do have one of our graduates here from the recent session, and so we'd like to acknowledge them, but also give them a book of, of, well, Lola will talk about it. But it's Glenn Murray. She's our, one of our most recent graduates, so we appreciate her coming tonight and sticking with us through all the sessions. As you know, technology, Zoom, it's not, it's not friendly at times to these things, but we did it. We got through it. And we had some fantastic speakers that just excelled in this environment. So we're so appreciative of that.
This is a wonderful, wonderful program. It benefits not only the child, but it also benefits us as grandparents, especially the older ones. And I think this is, this is phenomenal, absolutely phenomenal.
Thank you for coming.
You're welcome.
Wait right there. All we want to tell about the book.
And we want to present to you a book, It's When I Was Young in the Mountains by Cynthia Ryland. And Cynthia Ryland, as you may well know, is a West Virginia author and librarian. She's written over 100 books, but she was actually, when her, her parents separated, she had to go live with her grandparents while her mom went away back in the 1960s to nursing school. And so she was raised by her grandparents. And this book in particularly really reflects on the memories of that experience being raised by her grandparents. So we wanted to share that.
We'll read tonight.
A special place in your heart.
That sounds good. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
That's all we have, except tomorrow morning, now that we've got this little presentation behind us, we're going to start and get ready to go live again with our sessions in March. That's our goal. The virtual was nice. It was a learning experience for everybody, but it's tough because, you know, with, with COVID, the kids are in the house. And so there were a lot of disruptions and everything. But we, we muddled through that. I think we're pretty good, didn't we? You all, you were there?
Yeah.
Perfect.
And not only disruptions at their house, but at Grandma's house. I'd have somebody on my lap sometimes, too. So we're going to go live... So we're going to go live again, like I said, in March, and we'll get you more information on that. But, you know, Julie said it, we, the first thing we do is we thank them for what they're doing. And then we hear them say things like, a couple were going, a couple ladies were going through the, to pick up their food one evening because we always, the restaurants don't eat food. And so they're getting their food and I hear one lady say to another one, I love these evenings. She said, we come home from school, we can chill, get a little bit of homework done. We don't have to rush for dinner, get that out of the way, blah, blah, blah. She said, we just sit back and relax. We get in the car, we come down here, we all eat together, okay? We go over there for the sessions, the kids go that way to play. And she said, I feel like a grownup, I feel like an adult. And they, they really like that and they develop friendships, as Julie said. And then one time during a session, Carolyn, I don't remember, it was yours on parenting or what it was, but a grandmother all of a sudden said, wait a minute, I can't take it, I've had it. And then she said, what made my son think it was okay to drop his kids off and then just leave? What, what did I do wrong? Before our presenter could reply, the group said, whoa, 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 it's not you, it's the choice that he made, it's, it's not your fault. I mean, that, that's priceless and that's why we'll go live again in March. And that's why we'll be out there with more billboards and newspaper articles and radio, television, whatever we need to do to get the word out and get more grandparents in to go through those sessions and help them. And, oh, the support group, it's going great because they, after session eight, they're going, where's nine, 10, 11 and 12? And we're going, it's, it's it. But then, you know, way back a long time ago, Riley said, but we can do a support group. And that's been a good thing, too, for them to be able to talk. And we've got a couple of them, the first graduates, that actually do some of the sessions once in a while and, you know, keep it all running. So, okay, that's enough for me, I'm sure.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
No. Craig, we'll just assume that that check was double what Dr. Nelson gave us.
That's pretty funny right there. That's pretty funny. But you know what? It all adds up. And before we know it, God willing, and then they're still printing money, maybe we'll get the million dollars. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pam.
Brings us down to our next item, which is delegations. We have four delegations this evening. And I'll read this notice, the speakers before Harrison County Board of Education are asked to express themselves in a civil manner at all times, with due respect for the dignity and privacy of others who may be affected by the content of your comments. This is public notice that all meetings of the school board are audiotaped and most regular meetings are videotaped to be televised later on Tom Warner Public Access Channel 18. While it is not the intent of the Harrison County Board of Education to ever stifle public input into deliberations, all speakers should be aware that if public comments made here today violate the rights of any other person, especially under laws of defamation and invasion of privacy, you will be held legally and individually responsible. If you're unaware of factual nature of the claim, comment, or allegation you're about to make, the Harrison County Board of Education strongly encourages you to consult first your legal counsel. Each speaker has exactly five minutes to speak. First up is Jim Machete of Reedsville, West Virginia. I believe that's the right, is it Machete?
Machete.
Yeah.
Anything works. Good evening and thanks for having me again. This will be the second time I've been here and I'll lead off by.
What was your name again?
Pam Hudson-Viller.
Okay. Pam kind of leads into what I wanted to talk about. The first thing that she said tonight was, I can't speak because I smother and I can't breathe when I'm wearing a mask. And I'm still concerned about all the school kids that are wearing these masks six and eight hours a day. When are we going to start worrying about them? And at the last meeting, I want to thank you, Mr. Dora, you seemed very attentive and interested in this. It was obvious that you did your research and knew what was going on. You made the suggestion at that time that we needed to check to see who actually made that decision. If it came from the Health Department, what criteria was used, what protocol was used to make that decision? And it's been about three months, I'm sure, or I doubt that you've checked it out. You may have, I don't think anybody else cared. But I want to remind everybody that it's very important. If you listen to the news, you listen to the health people talk, you're going to find out coronavirus is an adult disease. Very few of the kids are affected in a very serious way with it. In fact, it's less than 1%. I've looked up the statistic, I think it's .0004, it's way less than 1%. I think 140 plus or minus kids have died from coronavirus. And that's, that's not a good number, but 300 million people in this country, so it's very, very, very small. That does not account for any underlying conditions these kids may have had. I've got three grandkids that go to school here in Bridgeport. I'm concerned about their health as much as you, as parents and grandparents, or about yours. But I can see what they go through every day wearing a mask, too. So I think it would behoove you guys to check into it a little bit more. You can't just take the word for what the Health Department says because they're going to say, well, the CDC says we need to do this, or Anthony Fauci says we need to do this. Do you guys know who he is? Tony Fauci, you've seen him on TV, right? The president's right-hand man when it comes to health. He's lied to us many, many times already. He's lied to Congress. He contributed to the Wuhan lab in China with him and his organization, the gain of function. And if you don't know what that is, please look it up, too. That's where you make a virus stronger than it is. Now, I don't want to waste all my time, I want to remind you what happened in New York, New Jersey, Michigan, California, Pennsylvania. These were some of the strictest states when it comes to shutting down business, closing things, wearing a mask everywhere you go and so forth. But yet they still had the highest number of deaths. If you look at New York, 16,000 senior citizens died under Quorumos' leadership. It's not a good number, is it? But again, they were senior citizens, but I guess they thought, look at how much money we save on retirement and social security now. Because they didn't care. Now, we have a governor that is doing a pretty good job, but yet he put the ball in your hands to decide whether to have a mask or not, which is kind of a cowardly way out. I would like you to take a look at Florida. Florida has 22 million people, no mask mandate, no vaccine mandate, no businesses closed, no schools closed, no shutdowns of any kind. They have the lowest per capita number of coronavirus death and coronavirus cases of any place in the United States. Does that ring a bell? I mean, it should. They must be doing something right. I'm just concerned about the kids. Again, West Virginia has 1.8 million people, or 8 million citizens. I do not know what the number is here, but whatever it is, they're still enforcing mask mandates. Now, do you guys believe that masks works?
We're not allowed to answer questions.
Oh, okay. Well, obviously you're, you're wearing a mask, I'm sorry.
Your time has expired.
Five minutes that quick?
Yes. It was, it was a clock. Thank you. Next up is Robbie Menendez, here to speak on the use of the field behind Nutter Fort Grade School.
How is everybody? Everybody all right? I'll hopefully take a couple of seconds, I hope. I'm on the Harrison County Pony League Board. Patrick Marazzi, a friend of mine, just took over the board, excuse me. Adam Gafferson stepped down this year. We're trying to do a bunch of different things. Right now, looks like this year, Pony's going to probably service like 400 kids this spring between softball and baseball. We have five fields at the Nutter Fort complex that we're doing some fundraising and stuff to fix up, to update, to do some different things, some new sponsorships, rededicating fields, things like that. But that's not a big deal. What we need specifically is potentially more space. There's a field behind Nutter Fort Grade School that kind of just hangs out. What I was hoping is that we could just have access to it. I'm not asking to own it, but more like maintain it. I know that we've talked to, we've spoke to Doug Hoag and a couple of other people, but more or less, we'd be happy to fix it up, reevaluate the infield, turn it in the infield, create batter's boxes, put bases in, things like that. We want to make it for the T-ball kids. We want to lower tuition or registration fees this year, which we're hoping are going to bump numbers up more, get more kids involved. By doing that, a lot more of the T-ball numbers, I think, will raise specifically. That field would be for T-ball and depending upon how much we fix it up, hopefully maybe even have later on, might do elimination dinner to help, you know, do different things for all of our fields, but maybe even use that field for more kids other than T-ball, depending upon what we get into. But it'd be really nice, we run out of daylight over Nutter Fort, we have all these teams and everything, and five fields seems like a lot, but to schedule all those kids in, it's kind of rough. But we'd be happy to, you know, maintain the infield, fix the fences, repaint things, make it look nice that nobody else's cost but our own. We just kind of need the, the okay before we start. You know, I'm a kind of a, as a small business owner, I'm kind of a, well, there's, I'm more of a ask for forgiveness than permission type of person, always kind of been that way. But this is kind of a little bit too much effort involving too many more people than just me. So just, that's kind of what I was hoping for.
I'd just say get with Jimmy and it'll be dealt with correctly.
I did the exact same thing when Gina was in T-ball. We went up there and I knew that, that's how needles and all this. And actually, the school board brought up like gravel and worked with me and my dad and some of the other volunteers for Pam. And we did the exact same thing, used it for the T-ball. Kind of disappointed to hear you here say that it's not being used because we've put a lot of effort in that and then improved and then new playground and stuff, but.
Maybe you want to throw some gravel at us, I'm happy to take it.
We did, we went up there and I remember John came up and it was literally before I knew the people in the board, of course, but.
John Romano?
No, John Amen.
Oh, okay.
And John, John came, he's my friend after that.
Yep.
But I'm really sad to know that that hasn't continued to be used.
It hasn't been.
I want to get off because we're not allowed to talk during delegations because.
I know, but I'd like the board to like participate in that.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
We will, we will place it on the next agenda to bring this up, but in the meantime, if you can work with.
Yep, no, that'd be great. And we'd be happy, we've been around, like Pony, I'm new to the board. My daughter, she plays softball, she's already played four seasons, but she's only six and a half, just loves it. But I'm new to the board and stuff like that, but I don't plan on going anywhere. We're going to need the space, so I don't plan on.
We'll place it on the next agenda. If you want to come back, then we can have some more dialogue and actually.
Yeah.
Nuts involved.
No, no, that'd be great. I appreciate it. Thank you, guys. Have a nice evening. Thanks.
Next is Lon Newton of Clarksburg.
Good evening. I'm also here about the masks. I'm very concerned about the children. I don't even have any children and I'm concerned for them. Because I went on the CDC website and found that they had a 2015 study with Vietnamese healthcare workers showing that rates of infection were consistently higher among those using cloth versus N95 masks. Most of the masks that kids I see wearing are cloth. They're touching them all day, picking up germs, taking them off whenever they feel like it. It doesn't seem to be working, in my opinion. It also says on the CDC website that during a pandemic, cloth masks may be the only option available. However, they should be used as a last resort when the medical N95 masks and respirators are not available. So I think what's going on isn't right for the kids and that we should end this mask mandate tonight. Now, my other concern is that if you have the power to enforce these mandates with the masks, what's going to stop you from vaccinating all the kids with this experimental shot? It's still only under a year old and I don't think it should be administered to anybody that's unwilling to take it. We live in a free country, at least I thought we did. And I pulled up some other info regarding the vaccine and it was truly shocking. I found that on the Johns Hopkins Hospital website, that in this county, we've had 168 total deaths since the pandemic began. That's a very small number relatively because we have roughly 68,000 people. Every life matters and I'm not discounting those that have died, but it is a very small number. In fact, it's only 0.2% of our total population. And what also really bothered me was before the vaccines came out, there was only less than 20 deaths due to COVID in the entire county. Since then, we're up to 168. So the numbers skyrocketed. It just doesn't make sense. Something's going on. It seems very sinister to me. But the more research I'm doing and the more talking I can do to help educate people, I feel is just a benefit. And I hope you heed my words and do your own research and I have nothing more. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up is Mike Perry, speaking for, on behalf of West Virginia State Treasurer Riley Moore.
Getting older, got to wear glasses. Good evening, everybody. I know you can't really respond. I, I just wanted to come down and introduce myself, somebody I've known for many, many, many years. And I had lunch with my father today and I have to laugh every time I come in because I see that photograph down there. I turn my head, gives us way back there, but he's doing good for those who wanted him. On behalf of Treasurer Riley Moore, I'm just here to say hello. I, there has not been a local government specialist in Harrison County for a number of years and I am now your new local government specialist. I cover five counties, including Harrison. Briefly, just to let you know, we did recently do the Grow Up, When I Grow Up contest. You may have seen some photographs with Simpson Elementary. We had a student there, we had Johnson as well as St. Mary's. The school received some money on behalf of the student who won the regional contest. So we were doing that recently. Just briefly, if you're not familiar, if I can get my eyes to work correctly, even with glasses, a couple of other things just to remind you of, the Treasurer's Office is responsible for unclaimed property and I'll be doing research for the entire county and the school system just to see what's out there and available. As you know, the Treasurer is the Chief Financial Officer of the state of West Virginia. He's responsible for the Board of Treasury Investments. Most of you are probably familiar with that. We manage the Smart 529 College Savings Program, West Virginia ABLE, which is a program for students and children with disabilities. The new Jump Start Savings Program will be coming out next year and you'll hear more about that and I'll provide materials to all of you, as well as the Hope Scholarship, which is coming soon. Most of you may have heard of the West Virginia Retirement Plus Program. Deputy Treasurer Pat Jack has been here before I know and talked with some of you. That's something that we will discuss further. The Get a Life Program is a financial planning course administered by the Treasurer's Office. It's been in many, many counties, except Harrison, and I'm going to hopefully get that in our school system as well. And of course, the banking services that the Treasury offers is obviously available as well. So those are just a couple of things. Again, I just wanted to come down and say hello, let you know I'm going to be in the area. As most of you know, I'm a resident of Harrison County. I will be traveling and making rounds at various times and available to all of you. And so that's why I came down to say hi. So I have a card, if anybody would like that, I'd be happy to present it to you and I'll stick around for any questions after, okay?
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. That brings us down to supervisory maintenance update.
Yeah, I don't have a lot of things, Mr. Hammerick. I would like to say, I just want to start out by saying we're going into, next week is a holiday week and fortunately, we'll be able to allow our students and staff to possibly. we'll be able to allow our students and staff to possibly have some downtime to regroup and come back. We have been able to stay in school and we've been pleased to do that, to be able to offer in-person instruction really from the beginning of the school year till now. So that's been exciting and I think that's why we're seeing some gains in our students. So that's exciting. And I just wanted to take a minute to say thank you really to parents and our students and everyone working hard and our staff in the schools. Still working, the substitute situation is getting better. It seems to be getting better. We have fluctuations, but it's getting better and our staff's really worked hard to make that happen and to keep our schools open. And I really just want to say thank you even to everybody in this room. We've got a lot of challenges. We've got a lot of things going on. We've identified a lot of needs and we are working on those every day and we are working as a group to get that done. So I just, I have to say thank you really to everybody across the county and to our families and happy Thanksgiving. And the other thing I'd like to say is Mr. Spatafor has been a trooper. He's come into finance and he's working hard. We've had some tough deadlines here in finance and he's just hung in there and he's jumped in with both feet and he's working hard to help us navigate some of these tough waters. So we appreciate that. And I think that Doug has an update for UTC.
Yeah, just real quick. The enrollment for, as of October for the UTC was 56 adult in adult program and 362 students in the, in the programs offered. About 15 programs and there's 362. They said they could accommodate up to 150 more students if, you know, students would take an interest or the schools push the situation to where then maybe they would like to enroll. They also said that they're going to do a two-week summer school program and it's going to be open to middle school and high school. Really going to try and target the middle schools. They've already done a, over at Taylor County Middle School, they had a talk and everything with them to come and tour the facility. And pretty much, there was a record date for two general contractor test preps with evening instructors and the two instructors was a Boylan and a Mr. Conch. And it's basically between the three, three schools. It's the United Career Center, Rumsey, and it's over Nicholas County. And the other one slips my mind as to which point it was. I didn't get it written down fast enough at all. But they are going to have evening instructors and classes there for general contractors.
And so they can get their license.
So they can get all the licenses.
So you don't have to go to Charleston.
Right, right.
Correct.
So they're trying to get them ready for that.
I hear you.
And that's pretty much it.
Right. I think that's all we have for superintendent's update, other than I did, I forgot to thank really the board. I appreciate.
We did.
I do appreciate you guys and I'm thankful to be serving in Harrison County. We're going to do some good work. So.
How many of the United Tech, United High School students go to UTC?
How many?
United.
United High School students go to UTC.
Is that number on there?
United. Fifteen. Fifteen.
And that's kind of a weird number because they may be in United, but they may be, may end up being counted as their home school. You know, they may not be there the whole year.
Can I just say something, Gary? That's been really on my mind since our last meeting. I've been doing a lot of thinking. When I was on the United Technical Board, one of the major things while the kids were still at the high schools and having to be bussed over was for their math, English, and science credits. And at the time at UTC, we were hiring in those teachers. Well, I don't want to bring up things that we voted on last time, but once again, we have United High School, which is 89 students, and we have 150 more available spaces at the UTC for 150 students. And I understood a majority of those students go there, but what I'm saying is it's a partnership. The UTC students need math, science, and English, so they don't have to go back and forth from the high schools and then to the UTC. And a lot of the people at the United High School like the trade offer at the UTC.
The problem right now is it's not in close proximity.
I don't, well.
You were right. When we were right next door, then you could go right over and didn't have to.
But listen, the building you just said would allow for 150 more students and we have 89 United High School students. What I'm saying is instead of making the distance farther, I don't know what the regulations are. We own that building. Our bus station is there. Would it not be smart for the Board of Education to look to see if that school could facilitate both? I mean, you're talking transportation, you're talking teachers. I mean, English, math, and science, do we have a shortage on teachers?
Because Park County used to be there.
But I don't know because they have these large classrooms that are set up for.
Are you suggesting that at United Technical Center, we offer math and English?
They do offer it. They have to.
She's saying put all United in there with.
She's saying that that'll be one.
Why wouldn't United High School, which has 89 students, go over to UTC, which has room for 150, I'm just saying. I'm just asking. I mean, I'm talking more about teachers because the transportation with the buses from bringing all the high school students to UTC had to do with the fact that the high school students had to go to high school in the morning so they could get their core credits in, which are your math, English, and your science or social studies, something like that. So while I was on the board at UTC, we actually hired those teachers so the students wouldn't have to travel as much. They could go right to UTC. And so UTC actually has English teachers and a math teacher. I mean, I was there when we hired them. And we also have at UH, at United High School, which has 89 students, UTC has room for 150 students. I don't know. It just kind of makes sense that. But I don't know.
I think the.
I don't know. Does my.
Just have juniors and seniors.
And minors and sophomores.
Some sophomores, juniors, and seniors. So it would be the freshmen. And then you've got the evolution medal and other programs. I see what you're saying.
I see what you're saying. But there'd have to be some modification in the doing too because you have these large.
I'm saying, why don't we look at it.
You don't have classrooms.
Rather than that, what do we typically do? Why not look at it prior to the fact or before there's moves?
Why don't we.
We should have done that.
Why don't we form a committee and study and approach Mr. Call about it and in the next meeting, we'll bring it up and see, see the situation there.
Well, you actually.
Oh, yeah.
Just, just since you brought that up, just to run it down. Bridgeport High School has 37 students going there. United has 15. Dogage County has 25. Grafton has 16. There are 51 students going from Liberty, 92 students from Lincoln, one student from Notre Dame, 36 students from Robert C. Byrd, and 33 students from South Harrison.
I was thinking is you're talking 89 students, only 15 are going there. What are the rest of the United High School students doing? There's absolutely, it's like they're in their face, give some things that they can do. They can see the different programs. I just think it's the way it should be, basically, but I mean.
I mean, our, our. Yeah, our deal is to, is because it's multi-county and it's governed by the vocational portion of the education department. I mean, I'm, I mean, I understand where you come from.
She's saying you lost the building.
That's what I'm saying, but we got to watch.
Well, now I'm talking about teachers too because UTC has.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is it's two different governing bodies. It's not.
I just think.
I think English and math were taken out of there.
Yeah, I thought they took them out.
They put it back in.
They have, they have English and math teachers.
Yeah, we hired them.
Two math teachers.
Just strictly math, like as a course.
Yep.
So two math teachers and an English teacher for, he just said, for United Technical.
What about the other two, four classes and you think there are two more teachers?
Well, we have that. We have those teachers sitting at, you know, right across the field at United High School. That's what I'm saying. You have all the teachers you need. You don't have kids on buses. You're showing opportunity to the other 70 United High School students. He just said there's room for 160. I'm just saying, it just makes sense to me.
That's all I have for superintendent.
This is down to approval consent items. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Bus, new business, bus driver promissory note. There are two on there.
Make a decision for.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Funding request for Johnson Elementary School. This was brought to us last meeting and total cost of the project, 15,000. The school was providing 7,500 and they are requesting 78, 1985 from the contingency fund. Correct? It's close enough to the.
Motion to approve funding request for Johnson Elementary's canopy funding.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Old business, no old business, no policy updates. Bring this down to personnel, personnel matters. Is there a motion? Do you have a?
I, I move percent to 6984, subsection two of the West Virginia Code that the board go into executive session to discuss personnel, personnel matters, which is discussed in public might affect adversely the reputation of any person.
Second. There's been a motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We're in the executive session. Aye, opposed, motion carries or an executive session.
Hey, everything's done wrong.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. That brings us down to the item at hand, which is personnel and personnel matters. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the personnel agenda with the personnel agenda adjustment for November 16th, pulling Timothy Rittenhouse and replacing with Brian Kemmerer, Bus 287, and pulling Brian Kemmerer and replacing Timothy Rittenhouse on Bus 278.
They were out of what they should have been doing.
Oh, okay, they were wrong.
Busing your idea.
Okay.
I have a second.
Second.
It will move to second and any discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Brings us down to board member comments. Mr. Daughtry?
No, just following the mask. I still have not received anything back from the State Health Department. I did send them an email citing 31 mask studies done by the CDC, the NIH, the World Health Organization, multiple universities, and multiple countries around the world showing that masks were more harmful than helpful. And I asked in that letter what mask studies that they were using to recommend students wearing masks when all those other 31 different studies showed different. And I haven't received anything back yet. I sent an email to the State Health Department requesting, yeah, requesting what data or what study they are using to justify recommending masks when their own studies was used to say that it's more harmful than not.
Is that sent here?
I think they've submitted.
Oh, yeah. Before we go to this side, Ms. Stettler, you had an introduction?
Yeah, we have, you know, Janie Marandino retired after many years as our elementary curriculum specialist, and we have Karen Freeland. Do you want to introduce her to the board?
Yeah, new math curriculum specialist, many years in the classroom. I think she'll be well respected, well received at the schools and teachers will love her.
Yay, congratulations.
How many years does she have? We had so many applicants.
Welcome aboard. Welcome aboard. Mr. Hoag?
Well, just to kind of follow up with what Kristen said, I think everybody in the county is working very hard. I know the teachers are putting in beaucoup of extra time and everybody in the office and maintenance and the bus transportation. And I think that Thanksgiving has come none too soon. I think everybody's ready for a little bit of a break to kind of recoup and make that, you know, drive towards Christmas. So I hope everybody has a wonderful and enjoyable Thanksgiving and a safe Thanksgiving. And we just ask the good Lord above to please slow down this COVID that's going on in this country. Thank you.
Mr. Davano?
Yeah, I'd like to echo Mr. Hoag's sentiments. Everybody, from the central office down to the service personnel, everybody's really pitching in to make everything work. And I've heard from teachers that are covering, you know, for colleagues that are sick, and it's just, it's just amazing to me how everybody pulls together and really fights hard when they know that they need to do so. So happy Thanksgiving to everybody. But, Mr. President, if it's appropriate, I would like to request an emergency meeting for tomorrow at 7:00 and ask that the superintendent place on the agenda the engagement with Suttle and Stonaker, certified public accountants, so that we may debate whether we can assist or hire them to assist our accounting departments.
If there's no objection, we'll call a meeting for tomorrow, emergency meeting.
7:00.
7:00 PM here in the board office. No objection?
No objection.
Okay. My, is that all the board members' comments?
That's all that I have. Happy Thanksgiving and everybody enjoy their holiday.
And I guess I'd just like to say this time last year, we were standing here with a line of speakers, and I think Mr. Perry may have been one of them, about getting the kids back into school, and we can't do this virtual. Virtual doesn't work. And here we are, almost to Thanksgiving break, and we've not missed a day of instruction. So I think the proof's in the pudding. And Ms. Stettler, you know, thank you and your staff because it took a lot of hard work to get here, and we're in school, folks. So is there a motion to adjourn?
It's moved. Second.
Moved to second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Children of peace, go in peace.